Henry County Commission, Henry County, Missouri, Thursday, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, twenty-second day of the January term. The Henry County Commission met personally at a adjournment at the courthouse in Clinton, Missouri. Those members present were Jim Stone, Presiding Commissioner, Mark Larson, North District Commissioner, Jake Bradley, South District Commissioner, Kelly Merritt, Deputy County Clerk. At nine fifteen A.M., Commissioner Stone brought the meeting to order. The minutes from the Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, meeting were read. Commissioner Larson made a motion to approve the minutes. Commissioner Stone seconded the motion, motion carried. The minutes from the closed session, Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, meeting were read. Commissioner Larson made a motion to approve the closed minutes. Commissioner Stone seconded the motion, motion carried. Expenditures for the following departments were approved to be paid. Road and Bridge, Law Enforcement, General Revenue, Inmate Security Fund, Law Enforcement Training, General County Government, Senior Citizens Service Fund, University Extension, Buildings and Grounds, Prosecuting Attorney, Admin Handling Cost Fund, Circuit Clerk, and Court Administration. Kelly shared an employee's complaint donation letter for commissioners to approve. Commissioners reviewed and signed a French benefits request by Kelly Merritt after discussion. Commissioner Bradley made a motion to appoint Kelly Merritt as the interim county clerk, beginning April first, twenty twenty-five, until the governor's appointment can be made or until the next general election will be held. Commissioner Larson seconded the motion, motion carried with a roll call vote. Bradley, yes. Larson, yes. Stone, yes. Commissioners discussed the parking lot and where to have handicap and visitor parking. At ten oh seven A.M., Charlie Kidwiler addressed the commission regarding Division Road in Davis Township. Charlie said he was tired of being threatened and harassed. Charlie brought documents pertaining to the portion of Division Road that he believes should be an open county road. Charlie hasn't complained about Davis Township doing personal jobs with township equipment. He also suggested that individuals were removing rock from county roads to use for personal use. Charlie asked Commissioner Bradley to go look at twelve oh one road in Davis Township. Charlie stated that the assessor suggested that he do some research at the museum. Charlie feels that he is being bullied and that the road should be open and maintained by the township, but that one person on the road board has a vendetta against him. Charlie said he wants the commission to contact Davis Township and maintain the road. Dennis Bowers shared a map from nineteen fifty-eight showing that the road is closed. Charlie provided maps as well. Three out of the four maps show that it is closed. Dennis stated that there was a hearing that was held a few years ago where it was decided that the road was closed. Charlie stated he would only allow Commissioner Larson to listen to the recording he has that will prove the road is open. Commissioner Larson shared his expectations of road closures and openings with the county from here on out. He wants to make sure that there's a paper trail for every road closure, opening, road closure or opening. And as in the past, there was not enough documentation to prove if roads have been open and/or closed. He says the townships are going to have to start functioning as a government entity and doing their paperwork properly. County Clerk Rick Watson and Brian Kimball with Equity Bank attended the meeting to have commissioners sign authorization forms for the bank. Mike Kidwiler asked the commission for clarification on the road Charlie Kidwiler was talking about. Mike shared again that he and his son do not want the road open. County Clerk Watson shared budget reports for March. Rick shared that in January of twenty-eleven, the county had one point three million dollars in the bank, and as of January twenty twenty-five, the county has sixteen point three million in the bank. He shared with the commissioners the importance of sticking to and maintaining the budget, but is proud of the work he has done as county clerk, but is looking forward to moving on as the treasure collector of Henry County. Dennis Bowers, Road and Bridge Supervisor, discussed the M.O.U., Memorandum of Understanding, provided by the Corps of Engineers on this past Tuesday. Dennis reported that he went and inspected all of the locations. He stated the Corps is going to be responsible for materials if it's pre-approved and the regulations and specs which are unknown are met. However, the county would be responsible for labor and equipment, and the townships would be in charge of maintenance. Dennis is concerned that if we were to agree with the M.O.U., it would be like taking on private roads. It could be time-consuming and costly for the county and the township. He also shared that this would be an open M.O.U. and the Corps would be able to add or remove roads when they want it. Dennis shared he is not in favor of the county signing the M.O.U. All commissioners agreed that at this time, the M.O.U. provided is not something they want to sign. Commissioners met with Derek Schroeder, Trifan Guavas, and Darlene Serrano with Verizon Wireless Government via phone call for a solicitation. Ann Julian and Rick Watson visited with the commission regarding Senate Bill one ninety. Commissioners explained that they didn't feel they had control over anything but the county tax levy and the Senior Citizen Service Fund. Ann and Rick stated with sixty-three taxing entities in the county that it will be challenging to administrate if it, if all were frozen, as we are unsure of the legality of freezing other entities' taxes. Ann questioned how we would track residency, which partials would qualify, age verification, and establishing a base year. Deadlines were also discussed. The county does not own the programming to administer this yet. Ann suggested sending an informational flyer with this year's tax bills. Dennis Bowers shared that he wants to cut off the Road and Bridge job opening at four P.M. Friday, March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. At eleven thirty-five A.M., Commissioner Larson made a motion to go into closed session pursuant to R.S.M. oh six, ten, oh twenty-one, one, to discuss employee matters. Commissioner Bradley seconded the motion with a roll call vote. Stone, yes. Larson, yes. Bradley, yes. At eleven forty-three A.M., Commissioner Larson made a motion to end closed session. Commissioner Bradley seconded the motion, motion carried with a roll call vote. Larson, yes. Bradley, yes. Thank you. Stone, yes. Commissioner Bradley made a motion to adjourn the meeting at eleven forty-eight A.M. Commissioner Larson seconded and motion carried. There was a couple little typos I fixed as I went along there.
I thought maybe that's what she was doing.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes with the...
Circle it.
Commissioner Bradley seconded and accepted the minutes as presented. Now, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
It's a beautiful thing. We do have a nine... What time is Ted supposed to be here?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty. Okay. We got payroll to go through and a few bills here.
We need to make a motion to...
Oh, yeah, closed. I forgot about...
I'll make a motion to accept the close.
I second it.
I was going to say, except the close minutes.
Thank you.
On our board's... Well, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Yeah, you'll have to stay up. To walk in and say, who's the new kid?
Get on the box.
Kelly?
Yes.
How does it feel that you can't hide your corner over here anymore?
It's fine. It feels great, Mark.
These coasters.
I have some signs I need you to do.
I'm closed.
So today is the first day of the April turn. We have now jumped into the April turn. And our first, our first quarter is over. If I get to put Henry County Clerk in front of my name instead of deputy?
I'm not saying you fail on your first day, but there's no basket of candy.
You, did you forget that this is a commissioners' meeting and not a county clerk's meeting?
Yes, we explained once while.
You know, gotta keep them in line.
Somebody keeps a drop of fourteen dollars in that's working.
All right.
Well, I got an email.
Okay.
That is from Jack.
Morning, Ted.
Morning.
Morning, Kelly.
What?
No floral print anymore.
I know. I know it's popular, but some things just gotta go.
Mark, you brought up, did you bring up three of these? I only see two.
The, I brought you up a copy. So the two...
There's three here. Ooh. My law problem.
I have the one with your notes on it.
Okay.
There's two of them, so...
Yep, that's day one and day two.
I'm gonna tell you, um, I got two more of those in my email this morning. Paul's coming in today.
He was talking about it. I was gonna guess it. Yeah. Charlie used to have that.
I know. Oh, um, also, um, I looked up my soda cost last time. Jail's getting it cheaper than we are.
Really?
I think ours was thirty-two a piece, but that's bottled. I didn't know what we were getting at that.
You didn't get bottles, did you?
Yeah, I didn't know what we were getting at the sheriff's office, but yeah. Mine was more expensive. I have to raise my price.
So y'all wanna raise your slush fund, that's what you're talking about.
No, that goes into general revenue. There is no slush fund there, sir.
I call it, I still Rick, it's that there's no slush fund there. Exactly. Cause you know, we have a one.
Making fifteen cents a bottle, that's not a very lucrative business.
You need several of them. Put them on labor floor.
No, I ain't keeping up with that many soda machines.
That's not work. Always have two.
You do. Jake's got it.
I got it. Sorry, fuck you.
Look at us. I was looking for the other one. Say Dennis is coming up.
Dennis will be up. Um, he, he said he would be here while Ted was here. So I, he said he'll be here while Ted was here, so I imagine that he will be here pretty quickly.
Okay.
He wanted to be here, so...
See, I think Jeff Cooper's outside.
Oh, yeah. There's Scott.
You have about fifteen minutes before Ted's on the agenda if you want to...
Okay, do we have time, Mark?
Do you need a lot of time?
I don't, I don't, I don't need any time.
I thought she's gonna give us a little synopsis.
Before we jump into that, right quick. Generator guy came out last Friday and then within Friday, I'm giving the generator over here. He's gonna have us prices.
Okay.
Get us there tomorrow. And then the only other thing that's off topic is Everbridge. We started using that January, well, we probably off February first. Since then, we've had, we've had over two hundred thousand contacts where messages have been sent out. So for storm warnings, things like that, so it's working.
That's good.
Especially since the way the radios aren't working.
Yeah, what story is that?
Line cut.
Yeah, they keep that line somewhere thirteen highway around Shawnee Brown. You got your copies?
Uh, yeah, I got one.
Kelly, you got your copies?
I have mine.
Mine? Thank you.
You don't get a copy. No copy for you. All right, so right quick. The first, the top one, top section, that's day one testing.
Okay.
Next section, day two testing. And then the bottom is your E.P.A., D.N.R.
These for us to keep.
You, you, they're yours.
The bottom, down here.
So I wrote them out to the side, the dummy, I call it dummy proofing. A lot of people don't know what the, like, one point five nine minus zero means. So that's gonna be the actual number, the zero, zero, zero. I use this one for example. When you see how it says point, or one point five nine, you negative three? That means you gotta move your decimal over three. So that's the actual number you're looking for, zero point zero zero one five.
Perfect, thank you.
I went ahead and went through and highlighted on each location I wrote on. Yep. Keep on going.
You on page seven?
Not me on it. We should say, yeah, man.
It's not hot, like, there it is. There's some highlight, here it is. The masses. Well, there's some. Just didn't cut through this.
All right, here we go. So I went ahead and wrote on there so, so you know where the sample was taken from. And then I highlighted what was high at each location.
Do we know how high, how much? Is that, this one's four?
Yep, that's, so soil.
Okay.
Water.
Oh, thank you.
Soil, water. D.N.R.'s bottom, E.P.A.'s the top. So stay on that picture a second.
This one?
Yep. No, that one. And you too, Jim. So you see up top where the hex chrome is? Right here, it says hex chrome. So it shows up here.
Okay.
That's the results. But the reporting limit is also the same.
Okay.
Let's show Jim right quick. So hex chrome.
In final?
Here's our results. And your reporting limit is the same.
Yeah.
So what that, what they're, after talking with the lab, what they said is, if they're the same, they can't say for, for sure if it's there or not, at what levels. So we're gonna wait till their, this is, at the bottom, you see it says preliminary. We're gonna wait till our final results come in, and they're hoping they get that, that corrected. There'd be some further back. Let me find an example.
G.S.T.?
D.S.T.
D.S.T.
Davis School.
No, same bunch. Should be close to your third and last page.
Second or third, I think, the second.
Perfect. All right, so now you see on the hex chrome here? See how it's eleven point four? And it's above your reporting limit? That's gonna, that, that's high. So we don't have to wait on... It's just whenever the reporting limit and the results are the same.
Okay.
Those are the ones that they're, they gotta try to correct. Make sense?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Questions?
Let's try.
Yeah, that's that, that backfield, Davis. You have questions? So after talking with Chris, the guy who did our testing for Sunbelt, he, he, he did give me a list of his primary concerns off the preliminary results. And it's all the water. Matrose Lake, Deepwater Creek, and the Truman Lake intake are all by, um, hex chrome.
And that was who?
His name's Chris Schreber with Sunbelt.
With Sunbelt, okay.
Yeah, he's our testing guy.
It's all the water?
All water locations.
The water, yeah. Matrose Lake, Deepwater Creek, and the intake at Truman Lake.
Matrose Lake, what'd you say? Matrose Lake.
Matrose Lake, Deepwater Creek. And we call it the Truman Lake intake. We, they, at the intake, where the rural water falls, the water from.
And that tested high for the chrome.
And then the school was, those, those were his four primary concerns, were the Davis Elementary and then the three, water. Lot of paperwork. That's a lot of paperwork.
It is a lot of paperwork.
So I have a question for the commissioner. Now that these, these results are public, they're in our open meeting. We're going to get a lot of requests for these, I feel. How would you guys feel if I went ahead and slapped them on our website so that people could go and get them? Cause we're gonna get a lot of requests for these.
You probably should, but I would preface it with the fact.
Preliminary.
Preliminary.
Yes, gotta remember. And like, big time preliminary, because some of these are good.
Yeah, and that's what I put noted in the minutes as well. But as soon as these minutes come out, people are gonna ask for testing results.
That's what, make sure the preliminary.
Yes, right.
And big water.
Right. And I can do that, and I'm gonna...
It normally does. I don't know why.
No worries.
I don't know why it didn't show up.
It didn't come through, but I wrote it down on, like, the first page.
And we're about two weeks...
So, yeah, we, we're about two weeks out from the final results.
Then we'll get filed.
We'll get the final, yeah. The, um, big thing they're waiting on is the radium. The radium takes five weeks. So that'd be two weeks from today.
Yeah, I don't know how many times I can say preliminary in one paragraph in the mission minutes, but I'll say it again if y'all want to do it.
Chrome is in the water.
Water, yes.
That's where, where that was.
I just know we're gonna get a lot of...
There is one on there, and I did make a note on yours. We actually, we took a sample from the fly ash pile. And we cannot compare those to residential limits because we know they're gonna be way off.
Yeah.
And that's, that'd be in your day two packet.
Okay.
And I made, I wrote big on the bottom, cannot compare to residential.
Cannot compare to residential.
I don't know if I made that on you.
Which one was you on?
Day two.
Day two.
That's why we can't have those things.
It's gonna be...
Down here.
The ash, you'll say ash, A.S.H. Keep on going back, the other way, other way, other way, other way.
Now that, is this one?
This way? I didn't see that.
So yes, yeah, that's what it showed up there.
I go to this after that.
We're getting closer. Yeah, right, yeah. Okay, I didn't write it down. Yeah, it's okay.
Yep.
I guess. Okay, Mark, give me a... Okay, this one.
You trying to get in yet?
What is...
Not yet. So I didn't mark that because we, we can't, we can't use these numbers to compare.
Oh, we can't?
No, no, those are, those, these are residential, what they call residential numbers.
And these are?
Yeah. Yeah, so everything in the fly ash pile is gonna be high. So we can't compare it.
Well, this was out of the water, wasn't it?
Nope, that's the actual pile of fly.
Oh, soil, just the soil.
Yep.
Any of the chromium hex font, none of it should be anywhere. Right?
There are limits, but it's like point zero 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 one.
One five nine or something like that. So, yeah, I mean, if, if, if we get a reading of one, and that's what they came back with the final, that's high.
That's high, yeah.
Yeah, it's high.
That's a great feeling.
Questions, concerns, emotional outbursts?
Have we, uh, is, what's our next step?
Everduty, I'm missing contact with Jared over there. Because they, they sent theirs to a different lab.
Okay.
So we're gonna, we're gonna compare.
Gotcha. Jared, Kim, Kim?
No. Give me a minute. Horrible with names. Morrison.
Morrison?
Yeah.
Okay.
DNR won't have theirs for a little bit, so they do all theirs in now, so.
Okay.
And then we'll, they'll post theirs on there, so they say.
Oh yeah, the radium's right there, and Ted is on for nine thirty.
Yep, let's do it. Alright, Ted.
Okay. I'm here again. Okay. I'm the president of Davis Township, been sixteen years, twelve years to fifth, still here. I've come in and complained about the guy coming in last week, wanting Charlie Kidwalder, and told us a lie about him, okay? I've got, he said, I use Township rock to my driveway, okay? I've got a copy where I play the new, a rock to.
See, I still got my copy.
Took out your?
Yep.
Now. I'm gonna get ahead of this, I'm getting tired of this. You want one, Kelly?
Okay.
Now that proves, right there, I've got a rock to take for, okay? Alright. He says I'm using the Township brush hog, okay? And that's a lie too. See, think he opened his mouth, he's lying, okay? I've got my own fifteen foot brush hog, I've never hooked a ten foot brush hog. It can bounce back, okay? And as far as me shoving down a hearing, I am a staff sergeant for thirteen years, twenty-one years in service. If I'm gonna shove somebody, I'll probably finish the job. And that's a lie. I mean, I'm getting tired of these lies, and as far as him going above my house and giving me the finger in my life, that needs to stop too. Okay? That's, that's, that's a, the line. Okay, the other issue is that little stuff he's come in complaining about, okay? Fifty, in nineteen fifty-eight, in the plac book, it says, that, 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 we, we take care of two tents. Another thing is, once the greater, the employee goes past that two tent mile that belongs to the plac book in the township, then you're illegal because you're not covered. Code. That's another issue. You don't go past that line. Okay? Now, it's just been a pain in the ass, and this is the third time in sixteen years that this has come up. Every time the commissioners get replaced, we go through this. In twenty nineteen, we had a hearing. Jim was there, Jeff was there, Scott was there. The staff is problem. And he was given a piece of paper that states twenty-four foot road, five sev- five seven, seven twolves crown, four inches of rock, and a hundred foot turnaround. And he was told, to when he got that in, to bring it in to give to y'all, at that time, they would see, send somebody to inspect it. It's never been done. So he then got a leg to stand on. I mean, you want a copy?
Yeah.
I've got the one you gave.
I don't care, I'm talk, I want this saw today, okay? You got one, Jimbo?
I got one.
Hell no. Every time it comes in, get him one. You want some more?
Party favors?
Yeah.
I mean, this.
Let me see your letter, Jim.
I've had more trouble than one die in twenty-eight years.
He kind of is there.
As far as him telling y'all, use the Township brush hog, bullshit.
I personally use that brush hog to mow all the township roads.
So you?
I use it to mow anything township roads.
He does a lot of a cart roads.
Yes, and the cart roads. Now, here's what I do. I don't charge the township for use of my tractor or my time. I trade that, saving the township money, by trading hours for hours. So if I use it for five hours mowing township stuff, I trade using my tractor, my fuel, my wear and tear, to use that machine, the brush hog, for myself for five hours, if I need it. If I don't, it's a, I'm just out that money. I'm saving the township money. It's the way we've always done it, I don't see a problem with it. What I do see a problem with is Charlie Kidwalder, we have had more trouble with Charlie Kidwalder than anybody in this country. And I personally am not on the board anymore, because I got tired of dealing with it. And what you guys are dealing with right now, the stuff out there. As far as I'm concerned, this needs squished right now, don't need to hear another darn thing about it.
We had a hearing on it.
The road is closed in nineteen fifty-eight, stays right there on the paperwork, it stops at the hedgerow. We used to go down there to be nice to the old man Kidwalder. We did that for him. I wouldn't do nothing for Charlie.
He's a thief too.
On another note, I got my test results back, almost as high as P Highway.
I got your message, by the way. I did get it.
Do I need to sign the sheet?
Yeah.
I mean, y'all need, he rode the horse long time. I mean, he's been in here, it's like a rattlesnake, when you sniff his head off, it'll start lighting. I mean, we need to solve that, that, we've had this, we had a hearing. And that's, that's the best thing they've ever done, Jim. There's no sense of going on the law and having us put up with this. I'll take care of the roads, I'll take care of, well, all these roads are dead end, I'll take care of the major roads first, and the taxpayers first. I don't even do my own road. If you do, you can plant, somebody's complaining. So, you know, we need, we need to solve this. And I will not push the little thing.
I spent last Friday and Monday, going through all the record books and everything.
Stop giving me the finger, buddy, right now.
And back in fifty-five, they closed a section of road. It was fifty-five or fifty-six. They closed a section of road. The township adds up, the range adds up, but the section ain't quite right. So, I mean, it, it's, it, so I don't know if, if it's the road or not, but it seems to be the road, but I can't say a hundred percent. But that was back in fifty-five. So, whenever, they're saying in fifty-eight, it was closed, it could've been, I don't know. But the township and the range adds up, but the section didn't add up quite right. And it is a mild section through there, they closed from east to west, to the north-south road. So, I mean, if you go from nine oh one to ten oh one, that's a mild section through there. Could that be it? Could be. Do I know a hundred percent? No. Am I eighty-five percent? Maybe. So, but, otherwise, going through the books, and spending, me and another guy spending two days down there going through these books and everything, they closed a lot of roads in that area. Especially when Peabody was in the area doing work and stuff, but, uh, in fifty-five's the only thing that I can come up with that's close to that area.
Okay.
Plus, and this is just my opinion, with them having a hearing back in nineteen, and it settled in, even though it's previous permission, I think it should be honored.
Well, I also agree with that. I'm gonna stick with the, uh, hearing, and what was decided with the hearing. And stick with the road inventory.
Because the road inventory just takes us down to that hedgerow, and from then on, it's a private road. So are you making that a motion, Jake?
Do I need to make that a motion, or was it just an agreement?
We need to get this in writing.
Alright, in writing it is. I make a motion to leave Division Road as it is, with the road inventory, and how else is that even workable?
We can't really do that when I found some more paperwork shows it's a through road, doesn't, doesn't drive.
And then I'm gonna stick with the hearing decision.
As it is, and honoring the hearing decision made in this year.
Yeah, nineteen you said?
That's what I've been told.
Twenty nineteen February twenty-four.
Okay. And then this issue is solved.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll second it. My, my, the only thing I am gonna say is that, I don't, I, I don't know what you exactly, I know, but I've saw you down there doing all that. But I wanna make sure that any more roads that you guys deem not to take care of, do it the proper way. Do it the proper way, that way we don't end up in here arguing over something that should've been handled paperwork-wise, and I, I mean, you guys, this isn't your deal, you probably weren't, I mean, if it goes back that far, uh, I'm pretty sure you probably weren't on the road.
Two, seven years.
Yeah, yeah, so, but I can't stress that enough, because I'm gonna be brutally honest with you. If I have somebody come in and they have the same issue, the county's the one that's gonna take the hit. Because, or the road district. Because, I can't stress this enough, you guys are a government entity, therefore you need to act that way. Whatever paperwork you need to do to close a road, whatever paperwork you need to do anything, you need to do it. Because that's gonna save a whole lot of issues for everybody sitting up here. The good old boy thing, guys, we're in twenty twenty-five, I get it, I would love to be able to conduct business that way. I can't do it in my business. So, we're gonna have to do what we need to do, make sure everybody does whatever paperwork that comes in with that, and then we won't have these issues. But I will second, yeah, I will.
If I might add something, I mean, what you said makes a real good point, but I wasn't even born.
No, and that's, that's, and I get that, I get that.
And I know he wasn't on the board then.
Right, and, and that's why I said what I said, but I'm saying from here on, if, if, if whoever's, I, I don't care who's on the board, doesn't make any difference.
And the reason why Mark's saying this is, we had one in Township, we met with on, uh, an issue, and he, the board president told us, there you go, since I maintain it, we just walk away from it.
They just walked away from it, and you, you can't, I mean, I, I don't, I don't care what, I mean, this, this is your, you know, I'm a big believer in like localized government, that, which would be you guys. So you guys do what you need to do to make your township work, but just do it right. That's all I ask.
We've tried to do the best we can.
And I, and I, and I totally get that, I totally get that.
Cause I got proof you're at that road still. I wanna meet with you, big guy, I want you to listen.
Hey, we're, we're, it's our time, Charles. We done here. Okay, I'll, I'll see where you come from, Mark.
Yeah, alright, and, and like I said, I mean, don't, don't, I'm not coming at you, I'm just trying to save all of this, because there's, there's no need in.
If you try to maintain a private road, you're not insured.
Right, no, no, I understand that.
Try to do something, you're open to carry more of it for anybody in this township, you know, of county. We've been got the manpower to take care of all these dead end roads.
Right, right. We've got, kids probably haven't been able to take care of the roads we got.
Pardon?
I said they barely got enough money to take care of the roads we got.
We've got that issue.
The motion is seconded.
The motion is seconded, and we have discussion. Okay, voice roll call, Mark.
Jake, yes.
Jim, yes. Voice carry.
That's a crock road. A crock road.
Oh.
It's gotta be in the seventeen.
Oh, perfect.
Do you need to move them up some? Do you need to mow them sometime? Let all?
Seven oh one.
I'll catch it later.
And another thing, three years ago, he couldn't do it, so I brush hauled cart road three years ago with my own tractor and brush hog. I mean, I tried to invest again with the township, but then twenty-eight year, I know he's out, so no, no, no.
I just couldn't get to it then.
That, that year he couldn't get to it?
Yeah.
He has brush hauled more than what he was on his own property, I'd say about two-thirds. A lot of times he brush hauled the whole board side, according to the plac book. And take care of it, and does the cart road. Cause at that time, whenever y'all get around, it's usually fall, and the grass gets tall, so I had him to do it when he's got time, so.
May I make a suggestion?
Pay more taxes, as I can give you a second brush.
Wherever you do something like that, write it down in your minutes, in Township, where the whole board is.
Keep a log.
Along, you've got everything down, it's in black and white, and you're not trying to do it.
He takes care, I've never hooked, I've never hooked that ten foot brush hog.
That's what I'm saying, it's not, if you have it written down, you go to the minutes, and if you.
Just saving the township money is what I'm doing.
And he's done a lot more than what he, he uses a file.
I'm not, you got it written down? You can open it up, and so there it is.
Range hauling gravel, put it in all the time, and never get paid it down.
I'll be done with pipe part today, so.
A lot, a lot of people kinda help some that township, there's some others.
Sounds good.
Alright, um, Ruwala and Barry are your next, but I don't think it's time yet, so.
You all voted, we're going with it.
Yep, yep, it's done.
Yeah, okay. We're already here, bye.
Thank you, sir.
Not a problem. I'll be in touch with you. Ted, I got a couple of questions for you.
Jake, I hand in.
Got it right here.
Okay.
Yep. Okay.
Alright.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Alright, yeah, no problem.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Say, I've got a couple.
Come ahead, Barry, you're next.
Morning.
Good morning.
I think we had talked about this in the past. We currently, the Juvenile Office is currently in possession of nine hundred twelve inch by twelve inch pavers. The road and bridge is so generously stored for us, we'd like to get them out of the way. We came up with some ideas of where to put those pavers. That is one option there, of putting nine hundred square feet of pavers in the little dip out here.
It's always wet.
Yeah, courthouse lake, like.
That's our duck pond.
Yeah, pond, duck pond, and putting those pavers there that would lift that up enough that might even help with that. Uh, and the other option is, on the other side of the sidewalk, where that big tree was taken out of, you know, the spot I'm talking about over here? It's wide open. Now, that's not our preferred location, because there's no shade there. And it would take too long to probably grow trees to put shade over it. We also had spoken about the fact that that ground would need to be prepared, and that's where I had suggested that maybe we could utilize road and bridge.
You're so happy he's in here today.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm so glad that he's here. And maybe get that prepared a little bit, so it was flat, and, and figure out some kind of. Maybe get that repaired a little bit so it was flat and, and figure out some kind of base to put under it. Uh, we already own the pavers, so that's gonna cost the county absolutely nothing for the cost of the pavers. We'll use juveniles that are on the community service, uh, to do the lifting and the moving of the pavers. I've got the trailer. I could probably get Dennis to set him on my trailer with a. Through the county could direct him. Uh, and, and get him shuttled up here and then our kids will do all the loading and unloading up here. And, and we'll do the general labor to it, but we just don't have the equipment or the availability to do the preparation of the, of the ground. So really, we, we just wanted to give you guys some options that we had looked at. And if you have a different place or a different idea, um, it's your yard. So wherever you want these pavers to go, we will, we will put them wherever you wanna put them. But that would be the optimum spot in that low spot there.
Are you gonna set everything on top of them? I mean.
The papers? No, we haven't made any, we don't have anything to sit on top of them right now. Um, we just figured it would be a, a great utilization of those pavers. So when we have a glory day and things like that, they'd have, some people would have a place to go set chairs or whatever.
Several years ago, we got money, we got a grant from the Division of Youth Services. And we had a short period of time to spend that money. And our goal was is to, to put them in what we call the moat.
That was the original.
That was the original. Well, then due to drainage issues and problems with the moat, it was decided that it's not the optimum place for them because they may have to tear them up to redo drainage. So we've been, Dennis has been awesome. They've just been sitting out there right now. We wanna get them out of his way and utilize them. We also would like to have some kind of a plaque to put on it that it was paid for with funds from the Division of Youth Services and the Twenty Seventh Circuit. Because then we can send that to the Division of Youth Services, so when we apply for more grants from them. They'll be more willing to let us have more money. So, don't know what you all wanna do. I'll leave that in your hands. All you gotta do is just tell us where you wanna do it. And, and don't, please don't think that's to scale because I'm not an architect. I just stuck an octagon shape in there. And that is not laying with the level of the ground. It's just stuck up there, so it, it'll look better. They are, they're red. They're a terracotta color, which would match the roof on the gazebo.
And the only reason we chose that shape is actually we wanna go with the shape of the gazebo and the brick work that's put around.
And you're helping with the pond.
What's that?
Helping with the pond.
What pond?
The pond.
Pond.
Well, we are, yeah, hopefully.
Heard road and bridge is gonna fill it in.
Uh, I'm gonna owe Dennis lunch after this is all done, but that's only if I get a grant from BYUAS to buy him lunch. I've seen him eat. What's that?
Will that be in the way for anything for O'Glory days?
No. No.
No, cause most of them, I mean, just pop up tents over there.
And if it rains at all, it fills up over there and it's useless during O'Glory days.
Fact is, it better to have, if we can get it, because without original plan, you just gotta get grass back here and fill it up, but.
And we might have to go over there.
It just keeps washing away. They put greasy down there multiple times and it just keeps sogging it and washing away.
So this can be, this can be an octagon. Uh, a square would be easier.
Yeah, it can be any shape. We were just using that because of the shapes.
We were just trying to match the gazebo and the existing patio that was there.
Whatever you guys think looks best, whatever you guys think, but it looks best when it's on the ground.
Yeah.
I, I think, personally, Ron and I have looked at different options. And if you wanna look at it from my window in the juvenile office, I've got a, a, a perfect view of where that is gonna go. Uh, so that's, that picture's taken from my window.
Yeah.
He did that just so he could sit there at his desk and make sure they were still getting them down right.
That was it.
That's what was my plan.
He'll be washing me out.
Community service, I can stay in my air conditioned office and, and get on yourself.
I have a speakerphone.
Move that one a foot to the left.
A motion?
We would need approval or we would need somebody who can go down with us to lay that out and flag that out. So when we were bribing the county road and bridge to come up there and do that, um, they wouldn't have to spend a bunch of extra time.
Have you ever thought Barry's emergency management is right here in this building? They said that.
They're, they're looking to help you.
But we've seen the work that road and bridge does and it's much better quality.
Hi guys, I agree. They, they keep saying I'm old here.
I could put it down with a kid.
When we talked to Chris, but we.
But in the end, uh, next year it's gonna be ripped out.
See, I'm good with it.
I'm good with it. I think, I'll agree. I think the octagon probably was better than a square and stuff.
We, we prefer the octagon shape because it matches the shapes that are already there. Of course, if you look, that's only a six sided one, but that's because.
He couldn't find out.
Uh, we didn't have the eight sided in my, in my, in my computer. We looked.
That's it.
Yeah. But we, we, we figured we just go down there and lay out my horse where feet and go.
I think it is.
I would think Chris would be who would lay it out for you because he's the one that's gonna.
And, and so hopefully we.
Chris will be glad we're not putting the stones on the, in the, no.
Yeah, he would prefer that. He didn't like the moat idea anyway. So we'll get with Chris and see if we can't start getting some flags out there, get that laid out. And then before we ask Dennis to start on that, we'll let you guys take a look at it and make sure that this is right. Cause that could be a, we can move this thing wherever we want to, but the idea would be to put it right square in the middle of where that swampy area is.
Ideal, it'd be great. Sounds good.
Right in the middle of all those trees.
Had to raise it, some stuff in it, some sand in it.
And who knows, we might even have enough, if we move enough soil, there might be enough to put back in there to help raise that up even more.
Yeah.
But there may be a little bit of cost to the commissioners. If we put those pavers down, we may, we don't have the money for, to fill sand between the pavers.
I think it is a catch.
Or to, or to even build a good solid base. We just have the papers.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that was our big thing.
There's a base you can get is lime dust for the rock, Barry.
Or fly the waste.
I knew somebody was gonna say, I knew somebody.
That is Barry Bollock.
I'm sorry, I just slipped out.
Mark, can you get to Mark?
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say.
You didn't realize her on camera.
Alright, so, uh, we'll just, we'll just get with Chris then, then we'll get it laid out. Sounds good. Thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barry, take your coffee. It is, Charlie asked me to hang out for a minute. Here, you can have our, is anybody next? Otherwise, I'm gonna move them along. Okay, one of my employees that I haven't had time to talk to yet. The area highlighted in blue down here is the landowner that is wanting to put a gate across the end of this private road. And I've instructed him at, well, I haven't instructed him yet, but he cannot put a gate at the end of this private road. Because then that's denying these people access to the back of their property. So the only thing he could do is get his land survey and put a fence up wherever he wants it, as long as it's on him. And put the gate wherever he wants it, but he cannot block the other property owners. Of course, this is the gentleman that's also wanting the trampoline that's sitting there and the, right on the edge of the right of way. He's wanting it moved. Um, that thing, it's not causing any problems or anything. It's just a nice war tool.
Gotcha.
So, um, this is down off Z Highway. It would be the second Osage Special killing. It would be the second subdivision before you enter into Benton County.
Okay.
Uh, but from what I'm tel, looking at on the map, uh, he cannot put a private gate across this road anywhere. Because then he's blocking access to the other landowners. Is that how you guys interpret the drawing too?
I don't know, I'm seeing.
And this is twelve fifty-one private road?
Uh, eight seventy, it's on, it's on eight seventy-two private road.
But they're all private roads.
Yes, sir.
Those private over here.
Why would?
Twelve fifty-one's probably.
Who don't have decisions on that? Do they?
I don't know. Though we can't let them put a gate up there because then it's blocking, I mean.
At some point in time, that never falls on them as lawyers.
This is different.
This is a different landowner than this landowner. It's a different landowner. There's three different landowners.
It's a private road. We don't control it, but the question, now that, can we keep people from?
Some of that's gonna fall under, cause it's all a problem, problem.
It's a private road off of a private road?
Yeah.
It's a private lane.
It is.
Private lane.
All of that's private roads at the rate?
According to your map.
True fault, Scott.
So if your map's correct.
Fifty fifty shot.
I mean, I had to have the guys go down and change this, uh, twelve, uh, fifty-one or whatever it is. Because they had them as green signs. And then as I look at your integrity map, it says it's private, so they had to go to bri, brown signs.
If, if it's, if it is truly a P road and it's not in your inventory.
It's not in my inventory.
Then you're done.
Yeah.
That's.
So if they put up the fence, that's, that's on them and the other landowners.
And the thing I gotta remember, whoever's selling this land, cause this probably is all one property of one type.
Probably, and they just cut it up.
Well, then when they're gonna do that, they're gonna have make easements across there to get to their property. That's a must.
So I just need to tell him that I, we have nothing to do with it because it's private road. All I had to do was put up the private sign because there was never a sign there.
But. Party's going, going, if he puts a gate across there, he can't.
That's, if he puts a gate up there, from what I'm understanding from everybody, then that's lawyer to lawyer. They're gonna have to fight.
That's right. That's where it'd be.
So, okay, that's all I need to know. Uh, next thing I need to talk to you guys about is Aaron, the bridge inspector. He's gonna be getting ahold of Kelly or Jim or somebody and setting up a time to come in and we gotta go over all the bridge reports and everything together. But in the meantime, when I talked to him this morning, he's almost sure that nine hundred is now gonna get approved for a soft match deal. And.
Nine hundred or nine oh one?
Nine oh one. And that's southeast nine oh one Kelly in Leesville Township. I wanna go ahead and get the beams ordered for that bridge and West Division Bridge, which is, uh, in Walker Township, Kelly. And I'd say probably between the two bridges, we're looking around thirty-five thousand for beams. So what I do is type up the specs, give them to Kelly, so she can get them in next week's paper. Because it's already too late for this week's paper. And then we will open bids the following Tuesday or Thursday, whichever you guys shoot, are shooting with. I will go ahead and email after the, uh, specs are sent to Kelly. I'll go ahead and email all the people that we've done business with and stuff on Bridge Beams.
Which was the bridge? And you said Walker Township, but what was the?
It's on West Division in Walker. And if you want the bridge number, I'm sorry, I don't have it.
It's okay.
And then the other bridge is southeast nine oh one in Leesville.
And both of them are going to be approved for soft batch monies? That's what you're saying?
West Division's already approved for soft match and he spec, he said that the nine oh one bridge should, after he went back and readjusted his numbers. Because he forgot to do that when he was putting in all his data from bridge inspections. So I'll need, uh, somebody to make a motion, someone second it, to go ahead and put the bridge beams up for bid.
I'll second that.
Police been made second to put their bridge beams up for bids for the two bridges, uh, on, of course, we'll call Mark.
Yes.
Jake, yes.
Yeah, yes, okay.
Okay, uh. I've been going up doing the daily inspections on the north. West four hundred bridge in White Oak. And, uh, getting all the documentation done on it and everything. The bridge is tore out. They're gonna be driving pilings, I would say, uh, today or tomorrow and they're chugging along on it. They brought in a semi-load of materials yesterday and got it staged there, so. The only other thing I have to report is. I got a phone call last night at home. A gentleman, uh, lives out of state. His mom's up in age, uh, really upset because somebody on asphalt route been going around painting this. So he wanted to know if he could, um. Hire somebody to go clean it off the road or do something with it. And I told him I would take care of it. So we had some, we got some SS one oil out there at the shed that I keep on hand. So we took a paint roller and went down and did this to it today, just so the, uh. It eases a little old lady's mind and stuff. So, um, that's, that's probably not the first place it's gonna be on asphalt road. Probably won't be the su, last place, but, um, whenever we find spots like that, I'm just gonna resolve them by covering them up with the oil.
That works.
Uh, we don't need any more advertisement. So that's about all I have.
I need the number for the dust control company that you.
Which one?
Both of them if you want.
I only got one.
Okay, I'll take that one. And then what was the other road down there in Osage Special that you was gonna turn or possibly goes back to a private? You have the two fifty-one or twelve fifty-one. What was the other one?
Eight seventy-two.
Eight seventy-two, thank you.
No, no, I ain't turning them back to private. They're already private.
That's right, sorry. That's what I meant.
We did receive a phone call from APAC, um, last Friday. They was wanting to know if it was okay, if they'd done some kind of dust suppression out there on the corny road. Uh, because they got their hot mix plant set up out there and I guess the trucks are just keeping that road dust covered. So they was gonna use a, uh, a thin down, cut back type oil to spray on the road and soak down in there and solve the dust issues. And so I got ahold of township and neighbors all fort, as long as they call so it's done. So I'd say if it wasn't done yesterday, it's gonna be done in the next day or two of some kind of dust.
Just the haul road?
Just the haul road.
What township?
And then I've had another.
Ty what?
Leesville.
Leesville, sorry.
Uh, that's gonna be on ten fifty-one Kelly. Uh, I have had another guy in Leesville Township, ain't sure what road he lives. Uh, I have had another guy in Leesville Township, ain't sure what road he lives on, didn't tell me or anything, but I'm speculating it's gonna be that three fifty road. Uh, he's wanting to spray some kind of dust control down on his road, uh.
The trucks have been taken that way too.
So I, I've been trying to get ahold of A-PAC and see if they spray that, if they could just turn and go about a half mile down the other way. That way it solves that problem too.
Yeah. And if you would ask them to have their trucks use the, what would that be, the east exit entrance?
We can ask them.
Huh?
We can ask them.
You can't ask them that?
No, because that's pri- that's not, uh, that's a public road, you can't tell them what way to take.
That's not entirely.
Hmm.
Whenever I was trucking, I got told what way to take around then, so they can be told. Or they can be asked, yeah.
But I can't make them to go.
No, I, I'm not saying make them, I just didn't know if you would ask them, ask their trucks to use the east entrance as opposed to. It works.
I can tell you my trucks are gonna go down that road.
I know we have to, there's reasons to go down it, I just.
But yes, I can pass the word on to them.
Thank you.
So, Mark, you got anything for me?
Red fox line, right? You get any idea when you guys will get up in that area? Cause I'm gonna go talk to him, and I know that's gonna be the first question is when I ask him.
Uh, are you talking arm mowing or are you talking brush hogging?
Both.
If you're talking brush hogging, it could be June-ish. If you're talking arm mowing, it'd be next year.
Oh, okay.
Because we mow half the county on even, uh, even years, another half on odd years. And this year, which is twenty-five, we're on the east side of the county. So we'll be back over there with the arm mowers in twenty-six. And that seems to be working out good and keeping the brush back and everything.
How far do you go with that? Just as far as you can reach or?
As far as we can reach.
Okay.
Unless there's a fence or something that designates the right.
Okay.
And then we just go to the right away because we can't go past the right. You got anything else?
Hmm.
Jake?
No, just that number.
Jim? Kelly? Congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're gonna do fine. With that being said, I'm done taking up the cameras, Scott. Take care.
Oh, while you're up there, uh, do you talk Collins?
Actually, I talked to him last night.
Okay.
Oh, actually, yeah, I did, I talked to him last night. He said he called you. He told me he's got.
Okay, what's next?
Prosecute attorney storage or coroner's? Well, not the coroner's.
Coroner's coming in.
Coroner's.
Uh, he's coming in at ten thirty.
Okay. You get fifteen minutes?
I actually looked down that road, I came, went up that road this morning before I came. It's actually in good shape. I mean, I don't know if somebody, who fixed it, but it's, it's.
I got it back, good shape.
Yeah, it's a good, good shape.
I talked to Tina about that, see where they're at, we can hold it. Ready to pull them in, yes.
Here, Jim, I'll give you a, a task.
There's a lot.
I've got add-ons and abatements for, uh, the month of.
Yeah. That?
Yeah.
They was having an issue balancing, so I, I, but they got it all lined up. I told Ricky had to do that before I left office, so.
Who's, uh, Yevagil Wagner?
She's in the recorder's office.
Okay.
She's an employee.
Gotcha.
Is that clear?
Mm-hmm. It is ten fifteen.
What's this again? Taxes. Taxes. Who did your testing?
Same one that done all the rest of them, uh, same time.
Same one.
Right.
Yeah. And mine was done right where all my, uh, water drinks off my roof, right in the road ditch, we took it right at the end of the drain. Wasn't the soil, it was runoff of the house.
Mm-hmm.
Rick said I will do this one last time.
Yeah.
It's okay.
We need to kinda keep an eye out on, on, uh, the budget. So the bridge stuff is time it goes off because we got to put in two.
Yes.
Cause that could get. You had to change sides?
Yes, over there.
It is?
It's a little chilly out here, too.
Need somebody crank it down.
I might have messed up yesterday when I.
I fixed it when you left.
Did you?
You had it on sixty-seven and walked out, and I was like, that's gonna be chilly in the morning.
It's gonna be chilly.
Yeah, well.
I just filled mine up, thank you.
We got a grant, I forgot about that one earlier.
Did you?
For two hundred more of those weather radios.
Good deal.
Not that they work.
I was gonna say, not that they work.
Yeah, maybe one.
Two hundred useless weather radios.
Why don't you go southern tack?
How long do they think that's gonna be down?
I just saw it, it's back up.
It's back up?
Mm-hmm.
It was that, it really is. Well, we're supposed to get severe weather again tonight.
Yeah.
It looks like it's supposed to rain until Saturday.
They'll probably cut it again sometime today.
Is it from the roadworks that they're doing out there? They're moving on that. They already have both lanes done and sticky tacked up all the way to the warehouse now from County Line Road, yeah, they're moving.
Well, they halt Saturday after.
They passed the warehouse yesterday.
Passed the warehouse?
Sure sounded like trucks running on Saturday.
Are you Cody?
You got a little cool stint to it.
I'll check it out, I'm gonna run this, um, down to Amy real quick so she can get started. I'll check it out on my way back.
Eighty?
It's at seventy-two.
Super eighty.
Well, let's start holding that. Other, is it on cootling?
It's on auto.
It shouldn't.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
I'm gonna use the rest of mine.
Huh?
I'm gonna go use the rest if I got it in there, unless you wanna jump onto something real quick.
We're probably gonna need to call right down here, Quirrell Engineering, call this, MRM.
Oh, that we're not gonna.
Huh?
That we're not gonna.
Yeah, no, we're not gonna do that.
Yeah, probably be a good idea.
We'll move to their. Commissioner's office, Jim Sloan speaking. Okay. Pardon? Yeah, seven fifty-six, yes. Well, we're, we're getting closer on ours. All we have got, we've got a couple town, or a couple counties that has township former government that, uh, that we're gonna try to copy and make that work there. But anyway, it should be, we're hoping that that is done. It's been too long. Well, it's on the agenda, we've been talking about. But anyway, we're. Well, we'll see, we're a township former government. We're not a county former government, we're, we don't have to say so with some, some many entities. There's like sixty-three or some entities, taxi companies. All they know is that we can't, we can't block theirs, we only got control of the county, county levy. And then they seem to say somebody, that's it. That's a two-way process. Well, that's all we do, that'll be a different, all we do is give them. But anyway, that, that would cost, if they wanna vote for the levy.
The one that I can kill.
We don't have to say so like that.
I gotta get, they already got theirs done.
Hey, look at the, go.
So you gotta go look, I keep it where it was.
We can't, we can't.
Find out what he's wanting to start.
Freeze them, well, they don't say, cause that's not the way it works. We can normal freeze or order.
See, I think.
And that's only the, only two things we got.
I think they're all getting put in that red file that's underneath.
Okay.
Free. Whatever you wanna call it.
So you're satisfied, that's right.
Pop it down.
Uh, they're not, that's not anywhere in our, our realm, they do. And now that, in the counties that we have to talk to.
It's gonna look like a current of your budget, so you guys can look at it right now.
That's the one.
So.
It's a great idea. I have those numbers anyway, but.
Some of the issues that we had, and it was only thirteen. I think, uh, ten or fourteen. Yep, and now, uh, dates came in, I think they would have, they would have improved what they could on theirs.
I got two more in the, my email this morning when I came in.
I know.
So this isn't even gonna be correct.
I know.
Bates County is kinda check. Cas County is, is.
They're just gonna drop this budget right into teams so you guys can see it.
They said, hey, they got that, they get all the money for six, so that's where we just. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So that's a reason for it, but we oughta work on, we're gonna do something for it. Okay, alright, okay, thank you, sorry.
Well, that might not.
You've already been talked about, Paul.
Oh, good.
Anyway. I guess we go ahead and get Paul's in. Okay.
Are you guys ready for me?
We're ready for you.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I'll kind of explain why, what my concerns are here. Well, we are about to go over budget in my autopsy, uh, line item. And I just wanted you guys to know how that happened. Now, we're not there yet because all of the invoices aren't in just yet. But so far this year, now I inherited one of those invoices from Dane Sisk.
I just sent it to your chat.
Oh, you did?
You will have updated quorum error, um, budget in your chat.
Our, our budget was based on, it, it would have covered about seven autopsies for the year. And plus maybe some, uh, toxicology fees. A lot of times I can get away with, with, uh, uh, drawing toxicology and getting that sent off to our lab for that, depending on the circumstances and what the investigation requires. Uh, and normally that, that twenty thousand dollar budget would have covered us for those seven autopsies.
Yeah.
We're, we're normally underneath that. The last four years, we've averaged about seventy-four to seventy-five investigations for an entire year. This year, I'm at forty-one investigations this quarter. And it's been trending upward every month for the last six months. Uh, la- so e- every month since last October, we've had a couple more investigations, a couple more. This January, we had ten investigations, which matched the record for the last five Januaries. So ten cases was the record for January, and that occurred, I think, in twenty twenty, which was kind of a big year for us. Twenty twenty, we had a hundred and one investigations. But if we stay on track, if, if this continues the way it's going this year so far, we're probably looking at somewhere around a hundred and fifty investigations for this year, potentially. What investigations does the state step in and pay for those? Now, I do have one of those, and that always has to do with, uh, uh, a juvenile death. Okay. Anyone under eighteen years old, and I did have one of those. The state always pays for those autopsies, and it's just good business to have those autopsy. Yeah. Always. I remember you saying yesterday the one was covered, I just couldn't remember. Yeah, so that, that one is covered by the state. I inherited one of those autopsies from Dane Sisk from, eh, from twenty twenty-four. That was ordered in December, and the invoice didn't come in until this year. I know that, well, I, my, my, uh, I, I have experience on the city end of things, and sometimes when we have a expense come in on the next fiscal year's budget that was ordered the fiscal year prior, very occasionally, we can journal entry that back to the twenty twenty-four budget. I don't know if that's the case here or not, but that would. I'm not sure how that would work. I, I don't know.
It was actually expended in twenty-five.
Yeah, if it's paid for in twenty-five regardless of.
Right.
Yep. So, um, we're looking at, having said all of that, we're looking at right now as it stands with everything I have ordered, uh, we're over budget forty-four hundred and twenty-four dollars. When all of the invoices come in.
Total budget, budget line?
Budget line.
Are you looking at your total budget or are you looking at only your autopsy line?
Just the autopsy line. Yes. And I, I'm going to be under budget on a few things.
Right.
I, I have, I have a surplus of, uh, certain supplies and stuff. Provided that the, the year doesn't get bigger than it has already. I should be good on some of that other stuff. I shouldn't be going, I'm definitely not. There's ways that for me to not go over budget with supplies. That's not an issue. So that's easy, but this one is tough because you just, without a crystal ball, I didn't see this coming. I really didn't. I did help Dane Sisk with that budget last year and we looked over the last four years. And I said, there's no way. Twenty thousand dollars, we're good. Leave it alone. Well, surprise. Yeah.
Yep.
So I wanted you guys to be aware of that. I thought that was important. And, uh, and I'm gonna work on some stuff to make certain that, uh, that we're not surprised like that on the budget again. So, and there's some other stuff that really needs to be looked at that I'm looking at as far as, you know, with, we've been fortunate right now because, uh, a lot of times when I have to have someone sent to Kansas City for an autopsy, we use Jackson County Medical Examiner's Office because they're really, really good. Uh, which is important in my opinion. Yeah. Uh, uh, that transportation cost, uh, all the time. I've never seen us get charged by a funeral home, which is what we use for transportation. I haven't seen a funeral home go, oh, okay, well, we're gonna go ahead and charge you a couple hundred bucks for that. Which would be, you know, they, they could certainly do that if they desire. So we're going to have to really consider that someday. That may become an issue for us. So I'm exploring some other things to make sure that at least should that become a possibility in the future, that we're prepared for that and, and it's inside of a budget. I hate, I hate budget surprises and I know you guys hate budget surprises, so.
Well, we should, something would say, but there's not much we can do about it.
Yeah, and I'd like to have an explanation for the inexplicable rise in investigations. I can tell you that I am very, uh, I'm very conscientious about ordering autopsies. Um, it has to be a circumstance where, and a lot of these circumstances also involve other departments like the prosecuting attorney's office. Uh, we're trying really hard to make some cases on overdose deaths, particularly fentanyl overdose deaths. And in order to accomplish that, we have to negate a defense attorney's claim that someone could have died of something else. No, they couldn't have. Yeah, because it says, no, that was the only reason. So that's kind of where we're at there. If it's going to result in any prosecution, uh, for licorice, that has to, has to be autopsy so that she can negate any other possibilities. Okay.
Yep. Like I say, you really don't have much choice.
Uh, a lot of times, no. A lot of times, no. There are certain cases like the, an inexplicable death. A forty-four-year-old guy suddenly pukes and dies on a bathroom floor in a group home. And I don't have any, there is no medical reason for this. Uh, that's problematic. That needs to be autopsy. It could, and I, I anticipate that's a completely natural death. But that's, I'm not going to, I'm not going to gamble with that.
At least somebody can buy that.
Yeah, and that, and that's also, you know, risk mitigation for the entire county. I need to be right about certain things. Yeah. We need to shield ourselves from liability, so. Yeah, this has been a crazy year, crazy, crazy year so far. And the only, the only possible, possible explanation for that is, I mean, a lot of these investigations are run-of-the-mill. They're garden variety stuff. I can, I can review medical records and have a really good explanation for why a lot of people pass away. Um, but having said that, I, I think I mentioned it to you guys. Uh, the, the baby boomers all came to us all at once and now they're trying to leave us all at once. So that's a, that's part of the reason for that also.
Yep.
Fellas, that's what I got for you. Well, at least we're aware of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not good news, but.
Yeah, I know.
We gotta know about it.
I know. And so, yeah, I, like I said, we're already four grand plus over budget in that item, in that line item. And we're not, we're one-fourth of the way through the year. So. So I don't know how you guys wanna do that going forward. I, you know what my parameters are for ordering an autopsy. If you guys had any other questions about that, be glad to answer them for you. Uh, otherwise, we're just going to have to conduct this business. That's all.
Well, it's just some things you, you don't know.
Right.
And whether you're paying for it.
Right. No crystal ball.
That's right.
Yeah, no crystal ball and I'll ask for a lot more money next year and we'll use a fourth of that. Fingers crossed. Yeah, fingers crossed. But it has, you know, all of this is trending upward. Like I said, we have seen an increase in cases every single month. January was ten cases. That, that matched a record. Uh, February was thirteen cases. That made the record for any other month in the last five years. Thirteen investigations and this month, we've, we've had eighteen investigations. So, yeah. Oh, la, well, last month. Thank goodness it's April.
Not this month.
Yeah, come on, April. So, yeah. Alright?
Well, thank you for.
Well, thank you, fellas. I appreciate you giving me some time.
Yep.
I'm gonna get out of the way. I'm gonna go to more meetings and stuff. Well, good luck to you. Alright, thanks.
Okay. Well.
I'm in office one day and they bring me budget problems.
Yes, well, that's gonna be one.
It's, it is.
It's already there.
It is what it is.
Alright, Abigail.
Just received an email from Schrader Law.
I knew it.
Looks like we all got it. Yeah. Schrader Law.
That was eight forty, wasn't it?
Yeah. At least that's one I've got.
That's one I got.
You got it at eight forty? I just know I got it. Popped up on my screen. Um, if you need to do, go into closed session there, I, we, I also have something I need to discuss in closed session regarding legal matters. Um, regarding an email and a phone call that I got this week.
Yes.
And the other case that we're handling.
We need to go.
Uh, do you wanna do that now or?
Yeah, it will be.
What time is, uh?
Abby will come up when we tell her.
Right, eleven or is what?
Yeah, eleven's on the schedule.
Alright, well, then I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Motion made, say we go to closed session. Will you call Mark?
Yes.
Yes, Dick, yes.
Jim, yes. Okay.
Can you come back? I can speak then. Do you want?